Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. And it has been my treat this fall to celebrate that the schools are in session and that fall sports made it through their whole seasons. And I'd like to give a shout out to the O'Gorman girls who had an undefeated volleyball season and won the state championship over the weekend, and the Sioux Falls Christian girls who also won the state championship. So lots of good representation from Minnehaha County at the state volleyball tournaments. And congratulations to all the students who were able to successfully make it through a fall season. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. Just a reminder to silence your cellphone. And Craig, I believe is around if you would like to use a listening device. Takes us to routine business. The first item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Aye.
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And we have three different sets of commission meeting minutes for last week. First, I'd entertain a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for November 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the special commission meeting on November 17th.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
And finally, the special commission meeting for November 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $7,3316.3.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
I should ask the auditor's office to come and report on them because there's some significant bills in this week's list.
Thank you.
Are they present?
Yes, Kim Adamson is here, and we'll let her report on the bills that are being paid here this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. You will note on the bills today, we have a little over $3 million in payments to U.S. Bank. These are for our annual principal and semi-annual interest payments on our bond debt. Most significant on the list are two items, Series 2013 and Series 2016A. Those two issues are being paid off as of December 1st, and those are the two bond issues that were serviced by our building fund levy.
It feels like you should have some sort of big fireworks, something.
The projects that were funded by those issues were the courthouse, CCC, JDC, and the admin building.
We should have a celebration.
Yeah. Cheers.
Any questions about that? Commissioner Barth.
Yep, I just would also say we had $450,000 going to the fire departments and a million spent in the highway department in this week's bills.
Yep, some pretty big bills there. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I believe we had a motion? Do I? Can I? Yeah, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So there are a number of reports there for people's, for your review, the sheriff's report for October, the regional juvenile detention center report for October 2020, and then we have the auditor's reports. Is there someone here from the auditor? Vicki, there you are. Thank you.
I am here. Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the auditor's office, here with the October financial reports, a little later than usual just because of the election and other things going on in our office. So starting out with the general fund cash balance, sitting at a healthy $32,133,000, a little more than $13 million over last year. A lot of this is due to the COVID relief funds. We've received about $9 million to date, with about $3 million more to come in claims. So moving on to the highway fund cash balance, sitting at a little over $6 million, about 4.3 million under last year. This is just that projected spend down in November. There's, it's probably looking at about $5.5 million at this point, and I know Commissioner Barth mentioned about a million on the bills today, so that will continue to spend down as projected. Expenditures, total expenditures, $50.9 million, 79.2% of budget, couple percentages lower than last year. Personnel at $35.1 million, 79.3% of budget, again, under last year's budget percentage, and other expenses at $15.8 million, 79.1% of budget. So we are experiencing under-budget expenditures at this time. Revenues, total revenue, $65.4 million, 102% of budget. Taxes at $42.2 million, 90.7% of budget, and we'll look at a graph in a minute that I'll kind of look at that over the last three years. And then other revenues at $23.1 million, 136% of budget, mostly due to grant revenue that has been received. So, and then lastly, Kim put together this chart of tax collections over the last three years, just to illustrate the consistency that we've had in those tax collections. This was through the 19th of November, so five more business days of November to be included there. But with that revenue, we're looking at being at about 98% of budget in November, which is on track with last year, so.
Questions, Vicki? Obviously, good news there. I know that I've had an opportunity to have some conversations with some of you about, you know, this additional revenue that we've had. The county's in a different position than the city. The city was able to pay down some debt with this money because they have the opportunity to issue debt at any time. County has a, it's under a different statutory rubric, so we don't necessarily have that opportunity here, and we need to wait some time to make sure that the government okays the money that we've received and everything. So really, right now, that money's just going to sit in cash until we get the all-clear from the government that the money has actually been approved for payment to us. So, any questions about that right now? Otherwise, all very good news.
Yes.
More reasons to celebrate.
Yeah.
So, thank you. All right. So that takes us to, next item, item five, personnel actions. Entertain a motion to approve the routine personnel actions?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item B, which is a special commission action to consider moving pre-trial to the sheriff's office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. I don't know, Carrie, did you have something, anything? Carrie or Carol? It looked like maybe you guys were arm wrestling to see who got to come and talk about it.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, just to update you, several years ago when we started pre-trial, it didn't have a home, so therefore it was underneath the Commission Office. We're pleased to work with the sheriff's office for that transition and excited to have that happen.
All right. Any questions about that? It's been a work in progress. So I was actually kind of distracted, so I'm not sure. I think we had a motion?
Yes.
And do we have a second?
Yes.
You get that? Okay, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item C, which is a special personnel action to eliminate the pre-trial coordinator team lead and to classify Janelle Ingles as a pre-trial coordinator at the rate of 2820 per hour. Carrie Dever, good morning.
Good morning. So with any type of change comes some staff changes too. We're just asking to move Janelle to a pre-trial position at the rate of pay listed.
Question? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Takes us to item six, abatements recommended for approval, and there are none. Item seven, notices and requests. There's a notice for your review of a school district boundary change for Lennox and T in Lincoln County. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So this takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment today?
So I'm just to introduce myself.
You, yes.
All right. So hi, I'm Chris Swanson. I am just the newly-elected county, Minnehaha County Treasurer. I'm very honored to have this position. I'm very excited to have this position, and I look forward to working with all of you closely. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, but.
Commissioner Karski.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming this morning. I thank you, I know you've already enrolled in the High Performance Leadership Academy, and we really appreciate the effort that you're taking to hit the ground running, so.
And I've actually been able to get some shadowing in with some other counties, so that's been kind of nice, just kind of hitting the ground with them, so asking lots of questions. So that's been really helpful.
Great.
Good. Well, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming this morning. All right, is there anyone?
Madam Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Barth, yes. Hi.
Yeah, Chris, I just wanted to also congratulate you and say that I've known you for many years, and I hope to see you at many commission meetings over the next couple of years.
You bet. I plan on it. Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Barth, I'm sorry.
All right. Anyone else here for public comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us to regular business. Item 10 is to authorize the chair to sign the 2021 per diem agreements for secure and non-secure juvenile detention between Minnehaha County, Lutheran Social Services, and 15 partner counties. Jamie Gravitt, welcome via Zoom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center. Before you this morning is our yearly per diem contracts with our partner counties. I'd be remiss if I didn't explain which 15 counties that we're talking about. I guess that wasn't passed on in the information you were given, but we're talking about Bond, Home, Brookings, Charles Mix, Clay, Davison, Hanson, Hutchinson, Lake, Lincoln, McCook, Minor, Moody, Turner, Union, and Yankton, which if you look at the state of South Dakota, we're talking about pretty much the whole southeastern quarter of the state that we provide services to and have a good working relationship with those counties. In regards to the contract, the costs that we're charging for are going up 3% this year for housing in both JDC and shelter care, and then in Lincoln County for community supervision and evening reporting center services. I respectfully request that you authorize the chair to sign these contracts.
Any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Benega?
I don't have any questions, but with our partnership, we do a lot of business with the Department of Corrections, a juvenile division at the state, and they're a significant partner of ours in this whole process.
I think personally, this is just a great example of the collaboration that does occur between governmental entities. I think people just don't realize a lot of this that's going on, and so it doesn't happen without great effort. Commissioner Heiburger?
So these counties, most of them were together long before any of us were on this board and have worked together. They worked together to help pay for the last expansion that they had done or renovation at the JDC, and one of the county's commissioners said a long time ago that Minnehaha County is their insurance policy because they can't afford to house students or youth in their communities, and without having Minnehaha County there as their partner, what would they do with those kids when they get in trouble with the law and they have to house them for a year somewhere? And so it's nice to be an insurance policy for somebody else.
Well, it's just a great win-win for everybody. So we appreciate the work you do on this, Jamie. Anything else? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks, Jamie. Next item is consider a motion to accept election grant awards and approve supplementing various budget accounts as specified. Auditor Litz, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and this morning, I'm requesting that the commission accept the two follow, or the following grant awards to the election budget. The first one will be the HAVA CARES Act, and this was a cost-sharing proposal from the Secretary of State's office that alleviates some of the COVID-related extra costs the auditor's office incurred during the primary, and holding that election during a COVID pandemic. The county has already incurred the costs, and the state offered an 80/20 match for the amounts elections had spent that exceeded the cost for a comparable election. The total amount for the grant we identified as eligible was $39,342.24. The county's 20% match amounted to $7,869, resulting in a grant award of $31,473. The following automatic budget supplements are requested for the proceeds of this grant from the federal grant revenue as to the following expenditures. For postage, it'd be $11,540. For printing, it would be $3,477. And for the overtime, it would be $16,456. For the grand total of $31,473. Any questions on that portion of it?
Questions?
Okay. The second one that I'd like to get entered into our budget would be the CTTL grants. It was a grant offered by private businesses to help out our local election offices. A group of major businesses came together and put $250 million into a fund and encouraged election officials to apply for the grant amounts. Minnehaha County applied and was awarded $91,266. There was no match and very little qualification to receive the grants. It just had to be election-related and over and above regular election costs for a comparable election. And this did not cross over with the primary. This was, this was for the general election. And being the county was well-qualified to receive the grant, I am requesting the following automatic budget supplements for the proceeds of this grant from private grant revenue to the following expenditures. For postage, $50,000. Precinct officials, $27,266. And for election equipment, $14,000, for the grand total of $91,266. Today, I'm requesting that the commission accept the awards and approve the contract that goes along with the CTL, and approve the supplements into the accounts that are specified.
Questions for the auditor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Okay, this takes us to item 12, which is to consider a resolution to approve a property tax payment proposal for record 45803.
That's exactly it. Commissioners, today I'm requesting that the commission consider the accepting of a tax deed payment plan for the owner of RDID 45803. The owner contacted the auditor's office shortly before the election, and after discussions, it was decided to present the numbers outlined in the resolution as representing the best chance of success for the owner and the county. The action I'm requesting here today is to approve the resolution for tax deed payment plan for the owner of RDID 45803.
Are there questions for the auditor?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Just want to thank you very much. You've always been really great about working with people to put together payment plans that are a win for both the citizens of the county and for the person, so thank you for that work.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just an FYI, at the end of this meeting, Gina, I've got a lot of bond documents. I'm going to wear your wrist out signing them, so I'll meet with you when it's appropriate.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Commissioner Karski?
First, Bob, congratulations on a good election. I'll tell you, good job. And second, I don't know if we're going to have a chance to see you much in the next month or so, but just wanted to thank you for your service to the citizens of the county and to wish you well.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Karski. Like you said, you and I have been kind of, I don't know, just kind of following each other, so I'll look forward to seeing you in Mojave County here in the next month.
All right. So we have had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Commissioner Benega?
We just suggest that Commissioner Heiburger and I have talked about the property tax interest rates that are charged, and there's a lot of flexibility in the current laws, and we'd like to see that at some point maybe teamed up with whatever the local prime rate is versus frankly being all over the board. It's kind of expensive in some cases, so we'll be talking about that in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I address that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Heiburger had sent me a memo last week. I kind of had to take care of a few other things, but we're working on that, the details and the questions that you asked, and we'll bring that forward to you for whatever uses you have.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I just had a whole lot more questions, and it wasn't about decreasing the penalties or anything that go along with this because obviously there's some issues, and so we're just kind of digging into it with an interest rate that's over 10% when we're, when the banks aren't paying that. We thought, well, let's at least look at this and see what it is. We actually had this discussion in a commission meeting probably, it was in October?
Yes.
When we first started this discussion in a commission meeting. And so just asked a few more questions of Bob, and we'll see where we go from there, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 13, to consider a motion to authorize the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office to sign the 2021-2022 Vehicle Lease Renewal Agreement with Vern ID. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. This morning, I have in front of you a request for approval to renew our vehicle lease agreement we have with Vern ID Motor Cars. What this is, is this is for vehicles that our drug investigators drive as part of their high-intensity drug trafficking area program, also known as HEIDA. The vehicle lease payments are reimbursable from the state, and we've been doing this for several years. It's been a very good partnership both between the federal, the state, and then also our local vendors that we can utilize for vehicles. The reason we go with Vern ID in a lease option is it affords us the opportunity to have these investigators swap out vehicles more frequently based on their investigation's needs, so that way they are not easily identifiable for long periods of time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming over this morning.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
All right, next item is item 14, is to authorize the chair to sign a five-year agreement with Navex Global for the jail policy management program. Warden Mattson, there you are, I thought I saw you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just like you said, this is a five-year contract with Navex Global for our jail policy management software. The way that it used to run was we paid for 10 licenses, and they're going to a cloud-based platform where we have all of our employees that are going to be able to log on, which has been problematic with only having the 10 licenses. So it is a bit of a price increase, but with that five-year contract, they're only going to increase it 1% per year, and we're locked into that.
Any questions? I just, I mean, I was, I was very interested to see that you guys did this, and so this is the manual that your correctional officers would look up for the process to handle different situations, is that?
Yeah, we have roughly 300 policies for the jail. That's a guess. There's so many of them, I haven't counted them all. But there's some that the officers need to know right from memory, but there's others where they have time, and given the situation, they could look up the policy. They can go to any computer with internet access and be able to look at the policy. Currently, the way it is, they have to go to an onsite computer to be able to look at the policy, and if there's 10 people already on it and the 11th person wants to get on it, they can't get on. So it's, it's been problematic here and there, especially when we have new higher classes and they're going through policies in the classroom, then the staff inside the jail can't get into the program, so.
Commissioner Heiburger?
And then there's also some training, I mean, so they can go on, you can see that they've completed their training and stuff, like a checkbox?
Yep, every policy goes out at least once a year to be marked as red, so they acknowledge the policy, but we also do some continuing education on it, where we'll send a policy out. You can create a quiz for the policy, and everybody has to get 100% completion on the quiz, and we have that training record as well. No, it's simply ma, management. We develop the policies outside of that program and then we have to import the policies to the program. So when, when we're developing policies, we look at ADA or ACA, obviously codified law, what other institutions are doing, that sort of thing.
All right, okay. Well, that's very interesting. I think there might be some opportunities for other departments to look at a similar system, and so that's kinda why I was really interested in.
Yeah, other departments have questions on it, have them give me a call.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? If not, it entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote please.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 15. I think we've moved on to highway now. So item 15 is the first of several highway items. It's to consider a resolution to declare a highway department scrap iron metal as surplus and authorize disposal by recycling. DJ Boothey.
Morning Commissioners, DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. The Highway Department has accumulated a variety of scrap iron materials, metal culverts and demolition debris, stuff that we pick up in the highway ditches when people leave their garbage there. And the policy and procedure manual requires the County Commission to authorize a disposal of property if it's valued over $5,000. We're estimating the value to be about $1,000, so we're requesting authorization of the resolution that was presented for disposition of these materials through recycling at PJN. And like I said, the estimated value of the scrap materials is about $1,000. In addition to that resolution, if you want to consider a motion to direct the deposit of the proceeds to either the Highway Fund or the General Fund, you could do that now, otherwise I could do a, a, another agenda item in the future after we take this material to PJN. But I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions for DJ?
I would move for approval and place the funds in the Highway Department.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 16 is to consider a resolution to establish new fees for highway overweight and oversized permits. DJ.
Commissioners, in December of 2012, we originally established a fee structure and a permit, official permit structure for overweight and overwit permits. And we revised that in 2016, four years after the initial establishment of that permit. And so now it's four years after that revision and we're proposing to revise the fees again. The, the number of permits that we give out and the number of revenue that we receive is pretty consistent from year to year. What we've found is that we're giving out more annual permits than single permits over the years, and that's a good thing because it's less administration for us in general. And, and we've had really good responses from the contracting community. Everybody seems supportive of this permit process and we've received a lot of requests from other counties in the state requesting our, our permit fees and our, our permit applications so they can implement similar systems. The increases for this period are between 5 and, and 10%. It depends on which permit you're looking at and how much overweight the, the permit costs or how much overweight the vehicle is. So there's a lot of variance, but I would say generally speaking, it's between 5 and 10% of an increase over this four-year period. So there is a resolution attached and I'll stand by for any questions if you have any questions.
Any questions for DJ? All right, I see people deep in thought, but nobody looking like they have a question necessarily, so. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions now? Commissioner Benega, I knew one was percolating.
Yeah. When I look at the dollar amount versus the damage that overweight vehicles provide us in trying to fix, it seems like we don't generate a lot of revenue for the cost of what repairs has got to be much, much higher than that. I guess I don't know how you analyze that, but it doesn't seem to be balanced very well.
There was a study done in South Dakota at Black Hill State University about the cost of the damages to the roadways from overweight vehicles. This permit process, or this permit system that we've established is not set up to pay for the damages of overweight vehicles. The permit fees are, are generally trying to supplement the cost of administering the permit process. And then the permit is just to try to keep heavy trucks and, and overweight vehicles off the roadways. It gives an opportunity for enforcement and, and it also is a good learning tool for the contracting community to make sure they're not going on certain bridges or certain roads that overweight vehicles can't go on. So we're not trying to, to pay for fixing roads with this permit process, we're just trying to pay for the administration of the permit process.
I understand the process, it's not supposed to pay for the problem, so to speak, but it seems like everybody's paying for road repair when you have a certain group that are overweight vehicles that may or may not cause more damage than the normal process of farming or whatever. So I, it would be hard to analyze, I'm sure, but it, it just seems like it's totally out of balance.
Sure. And, and that's kinda the nature of the beast. The state legislature several years ago, right after that study that Black Hill State did, they changed the overweight penalty for, for trucks and vehicles that are overweight when they get pulled over and the fines that they have to pay. And we've had several in Minnehaha County that, that have been pulled over and paid in excess of $50,000 fine, which is a statutory defined dollar amount. A judge can't change that dollar amount. And, and you would think that the way that, that fee structure or that, that penalty structure was, was derived was based off of the damages to the roads and that money should go towards the roads, but because of the state constitution and that money actually goes to the school district in which that, that fine was, was given. So even, even the large fines that are given to the overweight vehicles that don't have permits, that money does not go towards the roads.
That's actually what my next question was going to be, was where that money goes to, which is fuzzy.
Commissioner Karski.
It's logical, I guess. So does this permit, if you get this permit, you don't get fined? Is that the whole idea? I mean.
The idea is that we allow a certain amount of, of weight over the legal load for certain types of vehicles and, and we allow them to get a permit to be overweight. And if they have this permit in their possession, if they were to get pulled over, then they would not be fined. And, and the laws in South Dakota for overweight vehicles are, are pretty generic where they, for example, a vehicle can be 80,000 pounds unless it has different axle combination, different tire combination, and it could be more or less than 80,000 pounds. Well, a lot of loads out there, for example, a wind turbine might be 100,000 pounds. So they have to get a specialized trailer that allows, allows that heavy load to be carried without having major impacts to the roadway. And when they do that, they're overweight legally, so they have to get a permit that allows them to, to transfer that or transport that, that, that piece of equipment.
So it's, it's a means to manage the vehicles and how they displace that weight when they're driving down our roads is what I'm gathering.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So if we have a, a very overweight transport that's proposed, we'll look at their route, we'll look at, at the bridges, for example, on that route and make sure that there's not any deficient bridges that they're proposing to go over. If they are, we'll reroute them to a different road that, that doesn't have bridges that, that can't support the weight that they're proposing.
Good questions. Any other questions for DJ on this? All right, I had a motion and a second. Roll call vote please.
Hyburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item 17, which is the Highway Department Paving Management Briefing. DJ.
Commissioners, I think our consultant Infrastructure Management Services is on, on the call right now and they'll actually go through the PowerPoint that, that we have.
Good morning.
Hi, my name's Dave Bratton. I'm with Infrastructure Management Services. I'd just like to thank the Commission for having me this morning. I can actually run through the presentation here if I'm allowed to share. I just made a couple updates to a couple figures. We had a couple typos, if that's all right.
I think, are we trying to figure out if we can share, if he can use our screen? Or, okay. Just give us a second.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff. I see his screen.
All right, well, we're working so that we have the same privilege.
You should call him from home.
So what are you wanting to see beyond his presentation? Do you have?
Is this, is this his screen or is this ours? Cause he had updated his slides and he wanted to share the screen so we could see his new updated slides.
All right, there we go.
Okay, he should be able to share.
All right, I think you should be able to share your screen now.
Yep, it should be loading. It usually takes my computer just a second to get loaded up through Zoom.
Be nice when our technology works. There we go.
All right. Should be showing up for everyone. Is it legible?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Again, thank you for having me this morning. My name is Dave Bratton with IMS. I was the one working closely with Shannon to put this together for you this morning. All right. Today I'd like to just briefly run over a couple items here. I'd like to talk about the basic, basic methodology of pavement management, the results of the condition analysis we did for you, and then what that means for your budget scenarios. First though, I'd like to just kinda talk about the scale of investment that you have in your roadway network. Now, these dollar amounts you'll see are rough estimates, but it's to kinda drive home the point that you have a fairly large investment in your paved network. Now, that encompasses about 343 centerline miles and about 5.8 million square yards of pavement. Overall, the condition of these roads are very good. You've got a PCI of 78 and a backlog of zero and backlog is, is roads that are under a PCI of 40. And we'll touch on what those numbers actually mean in a minute here. So why do we do pavement management? As you can see from the red curve on the screen right now, the life cycle of a pavement is not linear. You'll see on the bottom access, you've got time. On the vertical access there, you'll have pavement quality. And roads usually stay in, in good shape for quite a few years and then start to deteriorate a little bit more quickly. So funds that are spent earlier on renewing pavements are a better return on investment than funds spent later on rehabbing a pavement. And we can kinda see what that looks like with the red line here in this graph. As the pavement starts to slowly deteriorate, you'll spend a smaller portion of funds renewing the pavement back up to what's still a good condition and then repeating that cycle instead of letting the pavement deteriorate into worse condition and spending more funds to bring that condition back up. Now, how do we actually determine whether or not a street is in good condition? And we use a ASTM standard for what's called a Pavement Condition Index, PCI for short. And this is actually nationally accepted. If you were to go to California, Florida, Texas, or Maine, if you use the term PCI, the details of what that means are gonna be fairly uniform. So you can see that, again, pavements are going to deteriorate a little bit slowly at the top of the curve and then as it ages, you know, 15, 20 years, that, that slope accelerates, pavements get worse quicker. And then once you get to almost a failed pavement, the deterioration really falls off. So this index is actually based on identification of pavement distresses, and these are going to be the cracks, ruts, potholes and patches that you see while you're actually driving the road. We have an automated data collection vehicle that will run down the pavement. It's collecting laser scans, it's collecting digital images, so that we have a record of what was surveyed that we can go back to and review data from if questions come up or if there's uncertainties in any of the ratings. Now, depending on the severity, extent and type of distress that we run into in the field, there's going to be a deduct associated with that distress that we then bring down the score from 100. So a brand-new road is going to be PCI 100 and then depending on which combination of distresses there are, how prevalent they are, the, the pavement deteriorates down to, again, an overall minimum score of zero. Now, we can take a look and see what this actually looks like within the county. So here we have a section of 480, 484th Avenue, Highway 109, and PCI there is a 95. So that's almost a new street. We probably picked up maybe one or two cracks. This is an example of a street that probably needs little to no maintenance at this time. If we move a little bit further down the scale, we can see Highway 114. We've got a PCI of 67 and you can see that there is some deterioration starting to happen. We've got some longitudinal and transverse cracking going across the pavement, maybe a little bit of ravelling within the wheel path. And this is a perfect example of a street that would need some sort of renewal effort like a, a surface treatment, maybe some additional patching. Moving further down the scale, we have a PCI of 45 here on Highway 103. And you can start to see much more deterioration here in the wheel path. You've got some alligator cracking, which is indicative of the pavement starting to fail. So this road would be needing a little bit more aggressive treatment, most likely some patching in these failed areas and then maybe an overlay. And if the detail on the screen is good enough, you can actually see a section in the distance where something similar to what I just mentioned would probably have taken place. So looking at these conditions over the entire network, overall PCI is a 78 with backlog of a zero. And again, that's the streets between a zero and 40. So again, this is great condition. It shows that there has been quite the investment in the last few years to bring these pavements up to very good and excellent conditions. We would actually normally see something a little bit more like the brown line here in distribution where there's still a little bit of back, backlog. Pavements are concentrated more in the 60 to 70 range, and this would be what you would expect for an average network that's in fairly good condition. Maybe they haven't been as aggressive in their rehabilitation efforts. Again, you guys exceeded this. Backlog is down to zero. There's been evidence of quite a bit of renewal again. We usually see excellent streets, that's PCI 85 to 100 in about the maybe 15 or so range or networks that are just kinda keeping up, staying in average shape. And again, that average condition is usually seen to be about 60 to 65, and that's just considered to kinda be an acceptable average. Again, you guys have exceeded that. This has actually been our third round of data collection with the county and we can see how conditions have changed during that period. The green bars are our 2014 test. We had a PCI of 69 with a backlog of 4%. And during the last two data collection cycles, we've seen considerable, considerable improvements, up to a PCI of 77 and a backlog of 2% the previous test to now our current average of 78 with no backlog. And this really shows that the pavement management program and the funding levels that you've been using are actually being effective in, in increasing conditions and improving the network. So to see how this stacks up against other agencies, we've got a chart here that gives you an idea of just some of the networks that we test across the country. You can see PCI's in this column, backlogs, how many lane miles, and it's, it's kinda just an average, small cities, large cities. What we see in Minnehaha County is near the top of agencies that we actually survey. So again, the funding levels that you guys have been able to maintain has really, it really shows we didn't find any streets in that below PCI category, which is fairly uncommon. So knowing this information is great, but what do you actually do with it? So again, we've worked with Shannon and his team to determine deterioration rates, prioritize streets at different traffic levels, and where and when to actually apply rehabs so that these activities are being placed on the correct streets at the correct times. And doing this has actually allowed us to build a realistic model that we can actually run current budgets, future budgets and planned budgets against. So looking at that over a five-year period, we have a couple different funding levels. On the bottom access, we have a five-year plan, so years 2021 through 2025. On the vertical access, we have PCIs. And the colored lines are PCI outcomes for various funding levels. And we ran budgets assuming that we could fund any rehab project that was needed, all the way down to seeing what would happen if no funds were available over that five-year period. And you can see the black line is that no funding option and without inputs into the system, PCIs deteriorate rapidly. Between there, we have different funding benchmarks, maintaining the backlog at, let's see, which, which one is that? Maintaining the backlog at 2%. That would allow a growth in backlog, a deterioration in pavements, but that would only be about $500,000 per year. Maintaining your current PCI at a 78, it allows the backlog to grow a little bit, but it's roughly a little under 300,000, 2.86 million. Your current funding level is going to increase the PCI slightly to 79. The backlog will grow to a fraction of a percent, but it'll still maintain conditions fairly well. As far as recommendations from these outcomes, at minimum, we would recommend that the county maintain a PCI at or above 75 with a backlog below 5%. Now, this is kinda the bare minimum recommendation. That's kind of a worst-case scenario if funding sources dry up, if drastic changes, you know, are made to your budget, that's the lowest. are made to your budget, that's the lowest you would want to be. Like I said before, current budgets of about 3.4 million per year are going to achieve a PCI of 79 and maintain the backlog below 1%. It's a slight backlog growth, but still manageable in the future. A couple of things going forward would be, again, to continue to review the full suite of rehabilitation strategies, just to maintain budgets in the future, just to keep up on the pavement management system that's in place so that as you move, you know, one, two, three years in the future, you're still able to plan accordingly based on actual costs in the field. And again, maintaining a steady and effective rehab and maintenance strategy is going to allow you to maintain the investment that you've put into the network. And then one final recommendation is just to periodically resurvey your street networks to just keep up and understand real-world conditions that are out in the field. With that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any questions right now. I do appreciate this. I appreciate the Highway Department being proactive and getting you out to do this. I think this is at least my second presentation from you guys. It's always fascinating to see the options that you provide and the consequences of choosing different options. So I think it's really important information to make wise decisions. So, thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
All right, thank you for having me.
All right, that takes us to item 18, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Creher and Blaine for the chiller replacement. Mark Krins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, SOTI's department. On November 10th, the bid award was given to Creher and Blaine for the chiller replacement project for a total project cost of $1,887,800. Contract has been drafted and reviewed by the state's attorney's office, and I'm bringing it forth to the commission for approval. To add to it, the facilities has selected the second through fifth years additional maintenance contracts submitted with the proposal. In order to lock in that price, we had to accept it now, but the lump sum cost isn't due upon acceptance. So the maintenance contract will be funded through my budget on an annual basis. So I'm requesting the county commission approve and authorize the chair to sign the contract with Creher and Blaine for the chiller replacement project. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mark?
I make a motion to authorize you to sign that agreement, Madam Chair.
It's a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second? All right, anything, any follow-up? Well, thank you, Mark. This has been culmination of multiple years of work on this. It's great to find financing for this important project and be great to move forward still.
Yes, it'll be a great improvement. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please. Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And it takes us to item 19, which is to consider a motion to approve the liquor and wine license renewals for 2021. Olivia.
Good morning, Olivia Larson with the auditor's office. We have received the renewal applications for the liquor licenses as well as the wine and cider. We have a total of 17, I believe, here for you. They were reviewed by the state's attorney's office, planning department, and sheriff's office with no concerns or comments reported. There is one late submission, so that will be coming to you next week.
Questions for Olivia?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Commissioner Barth?
Olivia, the Monarch Steakhouse has package off-sale. Is that the only location that has the off-sale capability?
That's correct. They were grandfathered in. We can no longer offer that in the county.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please. Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 20, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? I just would say that we will have a department head meeting tomorrow. We do continue to monitor COVID. The emergency operations center is back up and running, and you guys should be getting that report on a weekly basis from our emergency manager. And we will be continuing to encourage department heads to utilize methods that we utilized last spring to try to keep their staff healthy, keep their departments open so that they can serve the citizens of Minnehaha County and just do their part to minimize community spread overall. So Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender. I have a couple liaison reports that I need to make. And I just received a phone call just before we got to this item. Can I go ahead with them?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, first of all, the museum is blessed enough to have received a grant or a gift to their endowment of $150,000. And that's certainly a wonderful thing as we move towards, you know, finding private funding for that operation. Secondly, we had a planning and zoning commission meeting last night. It did not go very late, but we had an issue that was tied three to three, and Bonnie Duffy broke the tie to defer action on a campground at the Houston racetrack. So we'll be addressing it again in January. And the East Dakota Water Development District made a number of grants to a couple of cities and also demonstrated some new technologies that will, could give us early warning on flash floods and things like that. And then the Safe Home Project, we have that board meeting, although I can't find in my notes exactly the date. But they will not be having a Christmas party. And the clients there will get a box lunch. And a couple of us are working on creating some small gifts for the folks that live there. And that's my, oh, they also have had no issues of COVID at Safe Home. No one there has been positive for COVID.
Great. That's great news. It's remarkable, actually. So thank you for that report. Are there any other liaison reports this morning? All right, that takes us to new business. Any new business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I guess it's new, but as you know, this is the week of Thanksgiving. And, you know, not only do we need to thank the people that have worked tirelessly during the COVID, but on Thanksgiving Day, when many of us will be at least celebrating somehow, giving thanks for the many gifts we have, many people will be working. I think of the folks at the county jail, the folks in the highway department, the sheriff's deputies, and many thousands of other people in our state and in our community. And I think I'd like to give thanks for them working while I am laying around.
The good point. There are a lot of people that we take for granted that are out working hard so that we can celebrate. So thank you for pointing that out. All right, any other new business? Any old business? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please. Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Have a very happy Thanksgiving. And we will reconvene in about 10 minutes, about 10 after. Thank you.